I thought they fixed something, are they going to fix something? Are they, are they so that they would...
Test one-two. Test one-two.
How you doing? I think you are.
Test one-two, test one-two.
I guess I'll pick it. I can't hear. It's on.
Yeah, last time. Is that where Barford put it? I don't know where he put it. Test one-two. Test one-two. It's good? Can you hear? All right, good.
Yeah, I think it's good.
Yeah, I'll try it on.
Good evening. I'd like to call the January 23 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order at 7:00 PM. Before we start, I have a few comments. Hello and welcome. I'm Chair Adam Miller, and I will be presiding over this meeting. As we begin, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items for remote participation. Public comment will be solicited during each actionable agenda item. Once I ask for public comment on an item, please click Raise Hand and Go to Webinar in order to make public comment. Before being individually identified, all members of the public will be muted. Village staff will announce the speaker by stating their name and unmute their audio to allow up to three minutes of public comment. When called, please state your name and address for the record and proceed with your comments, speaking clearly during your allotted time. Do not use the Chat or Question function in Go to Webinar, as these functions will not be monitored during the meeting. And please limit background noise to the extent possible. As a reminder, this meeting can be viewed live on Comcast Local Channel 18 or streamed at royalpalmbeach.com/Two. With that, we're all going to rise for the Pledge to the Flag, and Jonathan's going to lead it for us. Great job, sir. Okay, Sarah, will you do the roll call, please?
Yes, I will. Okay, so we have Chairman Adam Miller.
Here.
Vice Chairman Lauren McCollin. Commissioner David Leland. Commissioner Cara Derry. Commissioner Kamar Williams. I have Andrew Alba, Alternate One. And Jonathan Dickinson, Alternate Two. All right.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Before we get to the items, I'd just like to welcome Alternate Commissioner Alba and Alternate Commissioner Dickinson to the podium, to the dais today, I guess. Thank you so much for joining us. Okay, we will start with the minutes for the approval from the November 28 Planning and Zoning Meeting. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve minutes from previous meeting.
Motion made by Commissioner Williams. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner McClellan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes pass five to zero. Sorry, took my second account. Okay. First agenda item, application number 23-156 PVAR RP Logistics Parking. The applicant, RP Logistics LLC, is requesting parking variance approval to allow for variance from Section 23-51-2J to reduce the number of parking spaces to 68 spaces, where Village Code required 110 spaces for property located at 1131, 1141, 1151, and 1161 North State Road 7. Midi, I'll pass over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is the applicant present? Can you go to the podium over there? Anybody who's going to speak, is it just you, sir, tonight? Okay, I'm going to swear everybody in, so I'll go ahead and swear you all in at once. If you could come to the podium and give your names for the record? Thank you, sir. Your name, sir? Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I'm going to swear staff, and at the same time, if you could, all raise your right hands for me. Do I see you as well? Do you all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you very much. I'll turn back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask for ex parte disclosures on this item?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Midi. Sorry, I was calling you the wrong name. Joe Su, over to you, sir.
Good evening, Commissioner. Joe Su Ledger with the Planning and Zoning Department, for the record. Just before the presentation, your agenda item summary does have a quick correction, a minor correction that staff needs to do in the last paragraph. It mentioned something about restaurant we drive through. This will be updated prior to the item moving forward to Village Council to reflect the use that is being requested by the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
The application is, the applicant is requesting parking variance from Village Code of ordinances Section 23-51-2J for 159 parking spaces, where Village Code requires 217 parking spaces, a variance of 58 parking spaces. Section 23-51-2J requires a minimum of one space per 500 square feet of gross floor area, plus one space per employee on maximum shift. Be provided for an industrial and manufacturing use. Village Code Section 26-32-F6 allows the Village Council to grant variances to the code when special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved, do not result from the actions of the applicant, will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. A literal interpretation of the provision of this division would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by others. Will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of this division, will not be injurious to the area involved, or be detrimental to the public welfare. The applicant contends that granting this variance will not be injurious or detrimental to surrounding properties. Permitting this variance will allow the applicant to meet the parking needs of a long-term local business without impacting other business within the area. Village staff is not in support of this variance, because staff believes that no special conditions or circumstances exist which are not applicable to other lands will not confer or to the applicant special privileges that are denied to other lands. And therefore, staff requests a recommendation of denial of application number 23-156 and variance order VC 23-08. And of course, our code of ordinances, we're here to uphold it, so whenever an applicant requests a variance, we're most likely going to recommend denial. So this concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you, sir. For the applicants, Mr. Smiley, Marvel, or Bush, do you guys have a presentation or like to say anything?
No, just want to talk about the development company, and then, of course, the incoming business that we are requesting this variance for. So my client, McCraney Property, they've been in Palm Beach County 30 years, very familiar with the project type that is out here and the incoming business. We've worked well with staff on getting the shell to where it is now. A lot of business is coming into the building, which is good. And then, the tenant for which the business coming in for the variance is a well-known 100-year company here to Palm Beach County, very familiar with the way that their business works, so we're not concerned with the variance request relative to the parking situation. And both Jim Marvel from McCraney Property and Doug Bush from Bush Brothers are here if you guys have any questions relative to the request. But we're looking forward to a successful project here.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Commissioners, is this time for questions and comments? I did say I was going to start with Jonathan, so Commissioner Dickinson, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not.
Thank you. Commissioner Alba?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
I have a question, so tell us a little more about the reducing to 68 spaces, please.
I'm sorry, can you say a little louder?
Yeah. Can you tell us a little bit more about why you want to reduce it to the 68 spaces?
So I'll let Doug Bush come up and talk about that a little bit more in detail, but the way their business is, the way the code requires the parking count, it's not necessary to have the numbers, because they don't have retail coming up to the door and getting that sort of thing. It's a lot of trucked-out-to businesses, that sort of thing. But I'll let Doug discuss it a little bit more in detail.
Thank you.
Sure. So yeah, and we're not a public-facing business, right? The code is sort of broad based on a public-facing business where consumers may enter the building. No consumers are going to be entering our building. It is a wholesale manufacturing company. We make meat for hotels and restaurants and distribute throughout South Florida. And given the space that we have, we don't need, we don't even need the spaces that were allotted.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. Commissioner McClellan? No questions. Commissioner Williams?
What type of hardship would this bring the tenant if we weren't not able to grant this variance?
What kind of what, sorry?
The hardship for not granting this variance.
Well, there would be, the parking that would be required would really overload the site relative to the way the trucks would work, and it really would not operate properly. And so I don't think that the way that the code is putting parking requirements associated with the type of business really fits well. And it's just like a unique situation here, where it would, it would work best, you know, with the way that our parking count has been justified on the request.
Any more questions, sir?
No, that's all.
I do have a question for staff. Do we have any other instances within the village of this type of situation coming up?
Well, this, it's kind of a unique situation in the sense where the parking requirements for that site requires for warehouse and office to be parked, right? So when you have a use such as industrial and manufacturing uses, the parking requires for you to park the actual manufacturing uses. On top of it, you also have to park for employees, as the applicant mentioned, in their situations where it's kind of like requiring two requirements, employee plus the manufacturing uses that they're doing. So to their justification, they're mentioning that they won't need the extra parking spaces based on how their business has operated for the past 100 years, so...
And let me add that McCraney Property has designed or constructed millions of square feet throughout South Florida, through Central Florida, very similar uses. And, you know, I don't recall a single situation where we have a parking overload, where we have chaos of people saying there's not enough. It's really, fits just like what we've got out there at RP Logistics. So I don't anticipate any issues there.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay, so I'd like to open the floor to public comment on this item. That means anyone in the audience, if you want to say anything on this item, can come on up. Okay, Sarah, do we have anyone online that would like to make a comment on this item? Okay, so I'll close the floor to public comment, and do we have a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve application 23-156.
Motion made by Commissioner McClellan. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Congratulations, gentlemen. Okay. Thanks. I think you guys have another item.
You do have another item, so don't leave it.
No, it's two different items, sir. Okay, moving on to the next. Application number 23-158-SE, RP Logistics Parking. The applicant, RP Logistics LLC, is requesting special exemption, exception approval for manufacturing, limited processing, and assembly, i.e. cabinetry, et cetera, used within the limited industrial IL zoning district for property located 1131, 1141, 1151, and 1161 North State Road 7. Midi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicants have been sworn, so they remain sworn. I'll just ask the commission for any expartes on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Midi. Okay, Joe Su, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The application before is 23-158. The applicant is seeking special exception use approval to allow manufacturing, limited processing, and assembly in order to operate a 42,143-square-foot industrial-scale butcher and meat processing establishment on a property currently constructed and site plan for 128, 500 square feet, office/warehouse combination. The property is situated within the Aldi Park planned industrial district and located within, at 113, 1141, 1151, and 1161 North State Road 7. This slide illustrates the existing site plan and the proposed 42,143-square-foot bay where RP Logistics will be occupying, outlined in red. And revering the proposed special exception, village staff considered compatibility with adjacent land uses consistent with the village comprehensive plan and conformance with the village development standard for industrial limited zoning district, more specifically whether the proposed special exception is consistent with standards of the village comprehensive plan, complies with all development regulations of the village, does not have any adverse environmental impacts, does not have adverse vehicular or pedestrian traffic impact, does not have an adverse impact upon public facilities, does not have adverse impacts on adjacent properties compatible with the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood, does not have an adverse impact on property values in adjacent areas, is not a deterrent to the improvement or development of adjacent properties, will not seriously reduce the quality of air and light to adjacent properties. The following are site-specific conditions of approval for the proposed use. I'll read them into the record. Any change of views for the butcher and meat processing establishment building will require a site plan amendment, which must include a review of compliance with PBC traffic and currency. The applicant shall provide an update to the current site plan of record showing the location within the building of the special exception use. The project is subject to and shall remain consistent with the provisions of the Palm Beach County traffic and currency standards. No automobiles or other types of inventory may be parked or stored for any length of time on any part of the site except an area specifically designated for such use on the site plan. The site plan shall remain in compliance with the noise limits set forth in Section 26-101 Performance Standards at all times, and if at any point in the future should not comply with those noise limits, the applicant agrees to take whatever action is necessary to comply with the noise limits in Section 26-101. All chain link fencing shall only be vinyl. Staff has determined that the proposed special exception conforms to village standards, and therefore is requesting a recommendation of approval of application number 23-158 and resolution number 23-48, subject to all conditions of approval highlighted within the resolution. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, do you guys have anything to add for this item?
I think the only thing I would add would be that the code, once again, didn't have an exact fit, so we kind of have to ask for the special exception here. As to like, long-term, you know, the business coming in, like I said, 100-year company, expect them to be a village partner for years and years, so any future issues relative to that site related to this, you know, it will be a long time, I think, before that. We have to come back in and discuss that.
Very awesome. Thank you, sir. Okay, Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments? Commissioner Williams?
No comments or questions.
Commissioner McClellan? I have none. Commissioner, yes?
I'm curious, what are you manufacturing? Widgets? Can you give us an example?
No, it's a wholesale meat distributor and manufacturer, so we cut steaks for restaurants and hotels and country clubs and that kind of stuff.
Cattle or...
No cattle. Bring in the raw material, manufacture the finished product. Pack it, ship it out.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickinson?
No questions.
Okay. I'd like to open the floor to public comment on this item. Okay, anyone online? Thank you, Sarah. Okay, I'll close the floor to public comment, and is there a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve application number 23-158-SE.
Motion made by Commissioner Williams, so I have a second. Seconded by Commissioner Alba. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Congratulations again, Chairman. Don't leave, we have another item for you. I'm just kidding.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Application number 23-168-AAR Shoma Condo Reroofing. The applicant, Total Roofing Systems, Inc., is requesting architectural approval to re-roof 443 units of 45 buildings from a tile roof to a metal roof for property located 2300 Shoma Drive. Midi?
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Okay, can you come to the podium, please, and give your names for the record, and I'll swear you all in, please?
Tanya Hamilton, Total Roofing Systems.
Thank you.
Sergey Melnikov, Treasure of Shoma.
Thank you.
Jim Bier, Total Roofing Systems.
Thank you. Can you all raise your right hands for me? Do you all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll turn back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask for ex parte disclosures on this item.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Midi. Okay, Joe Su, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application before is 23-168. The applicant is requesting architectural approval to re-roof all 443 units of 45 buildings and replace the existing tile roofs with metal roofs for property located at 2300 Shoma Drive. The applicant is proposing to remove the existing tile roof system, remove and replace all rotted plywood decking and fascia, and install new mechanical seam, striated panels, and dove gray color. This slide illustrates the existing tile roofs on the top left and the proposed metal roof on the bottom right. Staff is recommending approval of application number 23-168 as submitted. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm sorry I didn't get all of your names. Do you guys have any presentation or like to add anything to this?
No, we did not bring a presentation today. We were told it wasn't necessary. But Total Roofing has been in business now for 25 years. Our specialty is metal roofs, so we do cover residential, commercial, industrial properties throughout the state. For the Shoma property, again, there are 43 buildings. All buildings right now are tarped, because there is significant damage to the tile roofs, so we do have quite a bit of water intrusion in the entire property. About 80% of the property is affected by water intrusion right now. So the purpose for moving from a tile roof to a metal roof is really because time is of the essence. The lead time for the existing tile on the roof right now is 28 to 32 weeks, because we are still dealing with tile shortages from Ian. So we do have the metal packages readily accessible to where we're actually ready to go to permits, and we can have, we can start the project within the next couple of weeks as soon as we have approval. So time is of the essence for this project. The HOA right now is dealing with a lot of loss because of the damages. There's a lot of mold remediation taking place as well, so we're really pushing to get approval for this project.
Thank you. Great. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Dickinson?
No questions.
Commissioner Alba?
Yes, just my own curiosity. What is the gauge of material you're putting on?
It's, we're using a standard 24-gauge metal.
Okay, galvanized? Coated with a, what type of colors are...
We're doing a Kianar coating on that metal, so the Kianar will actually be bonded to the metal during the manufacturing process, and the lifetime for that roof is about 35 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick question. Staging, all the materials to replace the roof, how are you handling that? Is this not... Is this not, not a lot of area over there?
It's very tight over there, so we have identified three small staging areas. We will not be leaving equipment overnight on property nor materials. We actually have our West Palm Beach location, which is right at Southern and Pike, so materials will be coming from that location daily.
Thank you. Great. Commissioner McClellan? Commissioner Williams?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you.
You noticed the building with the rainbow roofing panels on it off the job, that's, that's our, that'll be.
Oh, okay. Okay, cool. Thank you. Great. It's not too far. Good. Okay, I'd like to open the floor to public comment on this item. Okay, anyone online? Okay, I'll close the floor to public comment. Do we have a motion on this item?
Move approval application 23-168.
Motion made by Commissioner McClellan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dickinson. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, congratulations. Hope you get that done really quick for the residents. Thank you. Okay. Application 23-176 SE, We Rock the Spectrum. The applicant Royal Palm Center LLC is requesting special exception approval to allow for recreational facilities, commercial, outdoor and indoor within the general commercial zoning district and situated within the Village Royal, Royale Shopping Center for a property located 1169 A and B Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. Many, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is the applicant present? Can you come to the podium, please, and give your names and I'll swear you both in?
Number, Rudez Hauser?
I'm Linda Griffiths. I'm the property manager of Village Royale Shopping Center.
Thank you. Could you both raise your right hands for me? Do you both swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you very much. I'll turn back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask for ex parte disclosures on this item.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mitty. Josue, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The application before is 23-176. The applicant is requesting special exception approval to allow for recreational facilities, commercial and door within the general commercial zoning district and situated within the Village Royale Shopping Center for a property located at 1169 A and B Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. Pursuant to the applicant's justification statement, We Rock the Spectrum provides specialized sensory equipment for childrens to exercise and develop various skills and abilities. This slide illustrates the existing site plan and the proposed 5,076 square feet they were, the tenant will be occupy. And with varying the proposed special exception, village staff considered compatibilities with adjacent lane use, consistency with the village comprehensive plan and conformance with the village development standard for general commercial zoning district, more specifically whether the proposed special exception is consistent with the standards of the village comprehensive plan, complies with all development regulations of the village code, does not have any adverse environmental impacts, does not have any adverse vehicular or pedestrian traffic impacts, does not have an adverse impact upon public facilities, does not have any adverse impacts on adjacent properties, is compatible with the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood, does not have any adverse impact on property values in adjacent areas, is not a deterrent to the improvement or development of adjacent properties, and will not seriously reduce the quality of air and light to surrounding The following are site-specific conditions of approval for the proposed use. The special exception use approval shall become null and void should the operator We Rock the Spectrum cease operations at this location. The applicant shall provide an update to the current site plan of record showing the location within the building of the special exception. Staff has determined that the proposed special exception conforms to village standards and therefore is recommending approval of application number 23-176 and resolution number 23-53, subject to all conditions of approval outlined within the resolution. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would you guys like to say anything or have a presentation or anything?
I don't have a presentation.
No presentation, no.
Okay, thank you.
Have to answer questions.
Sure, thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, so what's going to be the total occupancy in that building?
Total occupancy? How many do you expect to be in per day?
Oh, I mean, it varies depending on what we're doing that day, because we offer a lot of different programs. So, you know, it could be a birthday party, summer camp, open play, preschool programs, like, we do a lot of different things. So, I mean, we really could be at capacity at certain times depending on what, once we're done with the build-out, what the, you know, the fire inspector says our capacity could be. I'm not sure. I'm sorry. I have a couple other locations, but they're a little bit smaller, so if I were to use those as a reference, you know, probably our max capacity would be around 60 people, including adults and children, so it's not, I mean, it's not huge, but this location will be a little bit bigger, so I anticipate we'll have more people than that.
Thank you. Commissioner McClellan? Just, what are your intended hours of operation?
Typically, it's 10 to 6. Seven days a week, we're there.
And the ages?
Under 10 typically, however, we do gear towards kids on the spectrum, so we do sometimes get a little bit older kids, you know, that have developmental delays or who have autism. Like, right now, I run a middle school social club, so I'll get, you know, maybe 15-year-olds in there. But I would say, you know, our main demographic would be under 10.
Very cool. Thank you so much. Commissioner Alba? Commissioner Dickinson?
Do you, it said indoor and outdoor. Do you have the ability to do anything outdoor in that space?
No, nothing will be outdoor.
No? I didn't think so. I was just curious. Okay. Cool. Nope, no other questions.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'd like to open the floor to public comment on this item. Okay, anyone online, Sarah? Okay, great. I'll close the floor to public comment, and do I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve this application 23-176 SE.
Motion made by Commissioner Williams, do I have a second?
Yes.
Motion, seconded by Commissioner Alba. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Congratulations. We look forward to opening the business.
Thank you.
Thank you. Application 23-181 SE, 99 Lives Esports Facility. The applicant 99 Lives LLC on behalf of JBL Village Shops LLC is requesting special exception approval to allow for recreational facilities, commercial indoor, within the general commercial zoning district and situated within Village Shops and 441 Shopping Center for a property located at 10113 Southern Boulevard. Many?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is the applicant present? Can you approach the podium for me and give your names to the commissioners, and then I'll swear you both in?
My name is Rob Eckert, and I'm CEO of 99 Lives.
My name is Irene Eyckert. I'm a co-CEO of 99 Lives.
Thank you. Can you both raise your right hands for me? Do you both swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you, and I'll turn back to the commission for ex parte disclosures on this item.
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mitty. Josue, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The application before is 23-181. The applicant is requesting special exception approval to allow for recreational facilities, commercial and door within the general commercial zoning district and situated within the Village Shops on 441 Shopping Center for a property located at 10113-110 Southern Boulevard. Pursuant to the applicant's justification statement, the proposed center aims to create a unique and engaging platform for video gamers, age ranges from 17, um, 7 to 17, offering competitive esports training, mentorship, gaming skills development, personal brand building for athletes and other team-building activities. And with varying the proposed special exception, village staff considered compatibility with adjacent lane uses, consistency with the village comprehensive plan and conformance with the village development standard for general commercial zoning districts, more specifically whether the proposed special exception is consistent with the standards of the village comprehensive plan, complies with all development regulations of the village code, does not have any adverse environmental impacts which cannot be prevented by the imposition of conditions, does not have any adverse vehicular or pedestrian traffic impacts, does not have any adverse impact on public facilities, does not have adverse impacts on adjacent properties, is compatible with the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood, does not have an adverse impact on property values in adjacent areas, is not a deterrent to the improvement or development of adjacent properties, will not seriously reduce the quality of air and light to surrounding properties. These are specific site conditions of approval for the proposed use. The special exception use approval shall be null and void should the operator 99 Lives Esports Facility cease operations at this location. The applicant shall provide an update to the current site plan of record showing the location within the building of the special exception use. Staff has determined that the proposed special exception conforms to village standards and therefore is requesting a recommendation of approval of application number 23-181 and resolution number 23-56, subject to all conditions of approval outlined in the resolution. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. and Mrs. Eckert, do you have a presentation or like to add anything?
No, we were just going to add that we're excited to bring our new business to Royal Palm Beach, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I have a question. So which games are you going to focus on?
Oh, yeah, we're going to do a lot of competitive games. All of the competitive games from Rocket League, Fortnite, Overwatch, basically, as many games as these kids want to play, we want to give them a team and ability to play with friends.
Can adults come too?
Absolutely, yeah. It's, it's a 7 to 17, but it will, you know, the fringes are all welcome to both sides.
Cool. Thank you. Commissioner Dickinson, any questions?
Is this you guys' first crack at this guy?
Yeah, it's our first business here.
Cool. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Commissioner Alba?
Yes.
Commissioner McClellan?
Sorry.
Commissioner Williams?
Is it strictly PC or do you have some console?
We will have consoles, but it would basically be PCs. It'll be, the consoles will be more for kids that aren't so familiar with PCs, but this will be kind of a training for them to even get more familiar with computers, get more familiar with the technology. We actually will even be offering what we call beyond the games, where we can teach graphic design and a little bit more outside of just gaming, but in their world.
Right. Definitely sounds like a great idea. I wish this was around when I was young.
Uh-huh, thanks. Me too.
Thank you, commissioners. I'd like to open the floor to public comment on this item. Anyone online, Sarah, for this? Okay, I'll close the floor to public comment. Do I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve item 231669 AAR, oh, actually, wrong item. I approve application 23188, 181 SE.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Williams, do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Dickinson. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Welcome to Royal Palm Beach, Eckers. We look forward to, to your business. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Application number 23-169 AAR, L Car Wash, excuse me, L Car Wash signage. The applicant Cough Signs and Lighting LLC is requesting architectural approval to install new monument and wall signage for property located 11453 Southern Boulevard. Many?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is the applicant present?
Oh, Lauren.
Okay, can you, whoever's online, can you hear us? Are they unmuted? Can you say something so we can know if we can hear you? What, do you know their name?
Lauren McPherson.
Oh, Lauren McPherson. Lauren, can you, we can't hear you. If you could unmute yourself, we can't hear you in the chambers. I guess as she tries to unmute herself, if you want to proceed with staff presentation, we'll give her a moment, and then you can answer or ask questions hopefully by then.
She should know how to do all this.
Touche, Mr. Chair, yes.
Josue, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application for is 23-169, is requesting architectural approval to install new monument and wall signage for a property located at 11453 Southern Boulevard. This slide illustrate the existing and proposed wall sign. To the left is the existing, to the right of the screen is the proposed L Car Wash This slide illustrate the existing proposed monument sign. To the left is the existing, to the right of the screen is the proposed. Staff is recommending approval of application number 23-169 as submitted. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Josue.
I'm actu, I'm actually here. I was muted by the organizer, so I didn't know how to use it, but I was muted by the organizer.
Sorry, Lauren.
Thanks, Lauren. Can you, can you raise your right hand? I'm going to swear you in. Can you state your name for the record?
Lauren McPherson.
Thank you. Do you have your right hand raised?
I, yes, I do.
Thank you. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and I'll turn to the commission for ex parte disclosures on this item before Lauren presents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitty, and thank you, Josue. Okay. Lauren, do you have a presentation or like to add anything to this?
No, I, I don't. It's, it's pretty cut and dry that we're just changing Southern Palm's Car Wash over to the new owners. L Car Wash took over, so we're just going to be changing the signage to match the new owners.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner, Commissioner Williams?
Questions.
Commissioner McClellan? I have none. Commissioner Alba?
None.
Commissioner Dickinson?
None.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to open the floor to public comment on this item. Public comment. Anyone online? Just Lauren. Okay, I'll close the floor to public comment. Do we have a motion on this item?
I move approval application 23-169 AAR.
Motion made by Commissioner McClellan. Do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Commissioner Alba. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Congratulations, Lauren.
Thank you very much, guys. Have a wonderful week.
You too. Okay. Application number 23-172 AAR, Maple Street Signage. The applicant Alternative Sign Group, Inc. is requesting architectural approval to install new, new wall signage for property look, for property located at 11925 Southern Boulevard. Many?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your name, sir, for the record?
Ricky Torres.
Thank you, sir. Can you raise your right hand for me and I'll swear you in? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I'll turn to the commission and ask for ex parte disclosures.
I do have a question. Was that Lauren McPherson that used to work here?
Yes. That's why we're, we're having fun with her.
I was like, I know that Lauren.
Any ex parte disclosures?
No.
Thank you.
Josue, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application before is 23-172 AAR. The applicant is requesting architectural approval to install new wall signage for a property located at 11925 Southern Boulevard. This slide illustrates the existing site plan showing the location of the sign on the building. building. There's this number one, as you can see on the site plan, this is where the sign will be. This slide illustrates the proposed wall sign details. This slide illustrates the proposed signs on the elevation of the building. Staff is recommending approval of application number twenty-three dash one seven two AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Josie. Mr. Torres, you have a presentation? You'd like to add anything?
Uh, no, I just wanted to add that my client or customer is very excited to come to the village, and, you know, those biscuits are amazing, so can't wait.
Thank you. Great. What kind of biscuits?
Oh, they're like Danish. They have like garlic. They have all ki, like...
Okay. We could use some biscuits here in Royal Palm Beach. Okay.
It's delicious.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Dickinson?
No questions.
Commissioner Alba?
We've actually brought some samples tonight.
Oh, no, I wish I would. I just came from Miami. Like, I thought I was gonna be late, so forgive me for looking like somebody put it together, but I was installing some signs, and I was like, oh my God, I'm not gonna make it.
You're all good, sir. Except for the Yankees hat, you're all good, so...
All the lights to get here is just mind-blowing.
Commissioner McClellan, any questions? Commissioner Williams? Okay. I'd like to open the floor to public comment. Anyone else online? Okay, I'll close the floor to public comment. Is there a motion on this item? I think they're waiting for the new guys.
Sir, I will make a motion on application two three dash one seven two AAR.
Motion made by Commissioner Dickinson. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Alba. All in favor?
And, Mr. Chair, just before you call for the vote, just a clarification on the maker of the motion. That was a motion to approve, sir?
Yes, motion to approve.
Thank you. And a second, or are you in agreement with that motion to approve? Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mitty. All in agreement? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
You gentlemen did a great job on the first motion, so... Okay, last item. Application number twenty-three dash one four six AAR, Vicki Bakery. The applicant forever signs on behalf of JBL Village Shops LLC is requesting architectural and aesthetic approval to install new wall signage on the east and south elevations of the commercial business for a property located at ten one one three Southern Boulevard, number two hundred. Mitty?
Is the applicant present for this item? Is she online? Okay. What's her name? Erica, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here. It's Erica Brunswick. I'm on the phone. I have the flu. I don't wanna get anyone sick.
Thank you. We hope you feel better. Can you raise your right hand for me, ma'am? I'm gonna swear you in. Do you swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, and I'll turn back to the commission for ex parte disclosures on this item.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Application for is twenty-three dash one four six AAR. The applicant is requesting architectural aesthetic review to install new wall signage on the east and south elevations of the commercial business for a property located at one oh one thirteen Southern Boulevard, Street two hundred. This slide illustrates the proposed east elevation wall sign details indicating a total of fifty-four point fifty-two square foot in sign area. This slide illustrates the proposed south elevation wall sign details indicating a total of twenty-nine point ninety-two square feet in sign area. Staff is recommending approval of application number twenty-three dash one four six AAR as submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Erica, do you, would you like to add anything?
No, sir, not at this time. It's very clean signage, I think, just branded also, so...
Thank you. We hope you feel better. Okay.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Dickinson?
No questions.
Commissioner Alba?
Yes, just remind, what products are you offering at the bakery? Are they gonna be on-site?
Getting hungry.
Yeah, Vicki Bakery, I believe they're more like Cuban pastels and Cuban coffee sandwiches, things of that nature.
Sounds good. Look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm happy we're getting biscuits and a bakery in Royal Palm. Great. Commissioner McClellan?
I'm...
Commissioner Williams?
Okay.
I'd like to open the floor to public comment on this item. Anyone online? Okay, I'll close the floor to public comment, and do I have a motion on this item?
I move approval, application twenty-three one four six AAR.
Uh, motion made by Commissioner McClellan. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Alba. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Congratulations, Erica. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too. Good night.
So, our next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission is on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, and I'm just gonna move us right over to the local planning agency. I'd like to call that meeting to order at seven forty-six PM. I think, Sarah, we could just recognize the same roll call we did from the P and Z meeting? Yep. Okay, thank you. And we'll just roll right into the minutes. Do I have an approval from the minutes from the September eighteenth local planning agency meeting?
Move approval for minutes from September eighteenth?
Motion made by Commissioner Williams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McClellan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five, uh, minutes pass five to zero. Okay. The only item on the agenda is application number twenty-three dash one three seven TEX text, Baptist Health. The applicant, Urban Design Studio, is requesting a text amendment to the village zoning code to amend sections twenty-six dash twenty-two and twenty-six dash seventy-five point seven of the village code to add a definition for the term freestanding emergency department to allow for freestanding emergency departments as a special exception use within the general commercial zoning district, and to provide for supplemental land use regulations for this use for a property located four fifty South State Road seven. Mitty, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just one, as you were reading that, I realized, I think that there was an error in the version of your agenda that got printed for tonight. The definition, actually, that freestanding emergency department, that is incorrect on your agenda. It's correct in the backup. It's an integrated care center is the term that's going to be defined. It's correct in your agenda item summary, as well as the ordinance that's in your backup. I just didn't, unfortunately, I'm sorry, I didn't notice it in the agenda. So, again, that language is integrated care center. Lency, are you here to speak on this one?
Yes.
Very good. Can you come to the podium, and I'll swear you in? This is also a quasi judicial item. Can you state your name for the record?
Lency Jean-Louis.
Thank you. Can you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much, sir, and I'll turn to the local planning agency and ask for any ex parte disclosures on this item.
I spoke with Lency.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mitty. Josie, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The application before is twenty-three dash one thirty-seven Z text. The applicant is requesting a zoning text amendment to the village code of ordinances to amend section twenty-six dash twenty-two, twenty-six dash seventy-five point seven, and twenty-six dash eighty-nine of the village code to add a definition for the term integrated care center to allow for integrated care centers as a special exception use within the general commercial zoning district, and to provide for development standards as well as supplemental land use regulations for the use for property located at four fifty South State Road seven. This is a brief summary of the proposed zoning text amendment. When it comes to the definitions, I'll re-read it in the record. Integrated care facility, um, integrated care center, an integrated care center shall provide medical office uses and a hospital-based off-campus emergency department associated with a Florida licensed hospital that is physically separate and off-campus from the main hospital emergency department, but is under the STEM license of the associated hospital. The medical office uses within an integrated care center may include services such as physician's office, clinics, ambulatory surgery, outpatient services, diagnostic imaging, laboratories, facilities, physical therapy, and offices for medical practitioners. A hospital-based off-campus emergency department element of the integrated care center is intended to provide comprehensive emergency services consistent with the main hospital, including but not limited to diagnostic imaging, lab services, and onsite physician twenty-four hours, seven days a week, a minimum of fifteen patient treatment days, and onsite dispensing of prescriptions drugs, non-prescription drugs, or both for the duration of a patient's stay, and often patients discharged, but not after the patient is discharged. This slide is also illustrating the development standard as well as supplemental regulations for that use. I won't go over all of them, but I will bring to your attention the minimum parcel size for such a facility shall be two and a half acres. Minimum building size for such facility shall be a total of thirty-five thousand square feet, and no variances or waivers from the provisions of section twenty-six dash seventy-five point seven B two shall be permitted. And of course, the building line of any integrated care center shall be set back a minimum of one hundred feet from a residential structure. This slide is identifying the added language to section twenty-six dash eighty-nine, our general commercial district, which establishing the integrated care center as a special exception use. Staff requests a recommendation of approval of application number twenty-three dash one three seven and ordinance number ten forty-three be submitted to the village council. This concludes my presentation. Glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, do you have a presentation? You'd like to add anything?
Yes, and I'll just go over the main points. Thank you, Josie. Lency Jean-Louis with Urban Design Studio on behalf of Baptist Health, South Florida, Inc., and what we have before you tonight is the introduction of the integrated care center use in the village zoning code, and specifically, the proposed zoning text amendment will be amending section twenty-six twenty-two to add the definition of the integrated care center use as Josie just read, to allow the integrated care center use as an allowed use in the general commercial zoning district as a special exception, and to provide supplemental regulations for the use. And specifically, the integrated care center is gonna consist of two components, the medical office component and the hospital-based off-campus emergency department component, which is derived from the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration regulations, and these are really an extension of the main hospital emergency department and medical office services. So as far as the medical office component, services provided will be consisting of physician's offices, clinics, ambulatory surgery, outpatient services, diagnostic imaging, laboratory facilities, physical therapy, and offices for medical practitioners. And as far as the emergency department component, there will be provided diagnostic imaging, laboratory services, and onsite physician present twenty-four hours of the day, seven days of the week, a minimum of fifteen patient treatment days, onsite dispensing of prescription and non-prescription drugs for the duration of a patient's stay, but not after the patient is discharged. In the general commercial zoning district, there are a few established medical uses such as physicians, drugstores, and... The village historically has considered imaging centers, testing facilities, and urgent care facilities as physician uses, and these uses are permitted by right. Our proposed integrated care center use is a similar coordinated use with these uses, and will be permitted in the CG district as a special exception use. And to dive into the zoning text changes, Josie did just read out the definition of the integrated care center, but again, this consists of a medical office and emergency department component, and the supplemental regulations prescribe that the integrated care center must be approved by the Agency for Healthcare Administration pursuant to the Florida statutes. Minimum size requirements include a minimum parcel size of two point five acres, a minimum building size of thirty-five thousand square feet, and no variances or waivers are permitted to these size requirements. And also, to protect surrounding residential communities, the building line of the integrated care center shall be set back a minimum of one hundred feet from a residential structure. Additional supplemental regulations include prescriptions that emergency vehicles are not permitted to occupy required parking spaces. The orientation of emergency pickup and drop-off shall not face any abutting residentially-zoned property, and emergency vehicle sirens shall be prohibited while on-site. And as far as the site plan submittal with the integrated care center use, typical site plan information pursuant to section twenty-six thirty-two F five will be required, as well as a summary and delineation of emergency vehicle traffic circulation on-site. So to really wrap up the proposed integrated care center use, this will be allowed as a special exception use in the CG district. This will require P and Z commission recommendation, as well as village council approval. It will be required to comply with the supplemental regulations introduced consistent with the integrated care center use, and it must show compliance with special exception standards in the village zoning code. And that concludes our presentation. Myself, as well as the Baptist Health representative are available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Dickinson?
No questions.
Commissioner Alba?
None.
I have no questions. It is exciting to be able to have another emergency room if needed for people. Commissioner McClellan?
Yes, the only question that I have is more for staff. So when the actual use comes forward, what kind of parking ratio is staff gonna apply to this? Is it gonna be a medical office ratio for the whole thing?
Most likely, yes, something similar. We typically, if the code doesn't collapse specifically parking requirements for specific use, then the director has the ability to look at other similar uses and apply those parking requirements. One other thing that we looked into for this is to make sure that emergency vehicle circulations within the property is identified within a site plan, and that's one of the ways we realize, okay, you know, when an emergency vehicle pulled into the site, are they gonna have their siren on? What path are they gonna take? So, they're required to provide us a site plan identifying that information.
I have a quick question. So the fifteen beds, are they just outpatient only, or can people stay overnight if the level of care needs it to be? I've seen these things kinda go both ways.
There will be no overnight stays. In that instance, it would be transferred elsewhere.
Commissioner Williams?
Questions?
Okay. I'd like to open the floor to public comment. No one's coming up, huh? Okay. I have it online. Okay, I'll close the floor to public comment, and do we have a motion on this item?
I move to approve, application number twenty-three dash one three seven text.
Uh, motion made by Commissioner Williams. Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Alba. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, our next meeting of the local planning agency is Tuesday, February twenty-seventh. Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Aye.
Okay. I always ask, because we're supposed to. Okay, so the meeting is over. Thank you. Great, great job, newbies and oldies and newbies, right? Josie and Mitty and Sarah, thank you, guys.
For eyes? Hold on. Let's make sure. I'll come up.